Okay. So we are back in open session. Welcome, everyone. I apologize for the lack of seating. This is about three times as many people as we have ever had show up for any of these things. So sorry, next time we'll take into that into account. But welcome, everyone. We just have one quick thing to go through here, which is, is there any public comments that's not related to any of the awards for the students? If not, then we will move right into the superintendent's report.
All right. And I have the pleasure of beginning to introduce all of the exciting stuff going on out here tonight. So I'm going to start by introducing Mr. Gatz and Ms. Sherman, who are going to talk to us briefly about a special club going on at Central School.
I know everybody came here tonight just to hear about what's going on at Central. So thank you all for coming and you're hardly waiting for me. You know, we had the opportunity, as we discussed at the beginning of the year, to add a club at Central. And Kelly Sherman, second grade teacher, is definitely going to volunteer to start the Run Club. And she brought students here today to join the club, to talk a little bit about it and share some things that they learned this year.
Thank you, Mr. Gatz. As you said, my name is Kelly Sherman. I am a second grade teacher at Central. I'm actually a Central and Hauser alum as well. So this community is near and dear to my heart. And I grew up being very involved within the community and different organizations throughout junior high and high school. So I wanted to make something at Central that kind of brought that community feel to Central as well. And I love spending extra time with all the students and all the different grade levels because we start in second grade and we go all the way up to fifth grade. And as of right now, I have 102 students officially signed up, which is about one-fourth of the school. Yeah. And I brought some Run Club members here with me. So if you guys could say your name and what grade you're in, and then whatever you prepared. Go ahead and talk right into there. That's right. Let me see my...
Hi. My name is Ellie Dickerson, and I am in second grade. I joined Run Club because I thought it would be fun and because my sister's teacher was doing it. I enjoy Run Club because I like running with my friends. And also, it's really fun to, it's a really fun thing to do, and it's one of my favorite things.
My name is Sophie Dickerson, and I joined Run Club because my teacher is running it. My mom, and my mom did track when she was little. And I like the outdoors, and I like running with my friends.
My name is Gwyneth Pignelli, and I'm in second grade. And I really like Running Club because it's a good experiment after school to, like, start running because, like, when you do something else, it gets all, like, your worries out of your mind, like homework and stuff, so you're not, like, stressed. And, um, and you get to run with your friends. And yes.
Hi. My name is Sloane, and I'm in second grade. I, I like Run Club because you get, after school, since you're sitting down and you're, and then, like, you don't, you're, like, all, like, tired. And then after that, like, you, like, snap, and then you wake up since you're running. And then you just have lots of fun with, with your friends with running. And it's basically, like, kind of talking with your friends while you're running. So yeah, that's why I like Running Club.
Hi. My name is Gavin Cohane. I'm in third grade. I joined Running Club because I really like running with my friends. And right after, when you're really, after school, when you're really tired because of learning, you just get up and just go run on that big block. And it also gets me, like, more, like, power for my hockey practice after. So, yes.
My name is Liam Cohen. I'm in fifth grade, and I enjoy Running Club because it helps me with other year-round sports. And I like running with my friends a lot.
My name's Molly Wondelick. I'm in third grade. I like Running Club because it helps me practice for the Pacer. And it's just a fun thing to do after school instead of play video games all day and hang out with your friends.
My name's Cecilia Mooney, and I like Running Club because I like running with my friends.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. And I'm impressed, 102 students.
That's pretty crazy. But it's fun. It's worth it.
Post our own 5K next year, Ms. Sherman.
Hey, I'm planning it. Don't worry.
Wonderful presentations from the students, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we have another group of students here. We decided at the beginning of this year that we would do, three times a year, we would acknowledge different students' awards and achievements going on in District 96. And this is our largest group, but we've actually had a steady increase over the course of the year. So this is really exciting to see everybody here. And I'm going to quickly turn it over to Merrill Brownlow, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and Mr. Gatz also, Principal at Central, who are going to call students by name, talk, name the award that they are getting. And we are all going to stand in front and congratulate students. Stand in the front. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to announce the name of the award that we're going to present so that you know it's your group and you can prepare yourself to walk up here. If you're here and you did not RSVP after I called the names of the people that said they were going to be here, I will ask if anyone else is present from that group who is getting the same award, and you can come up and get your award as well. Okay? Everyone's got it? We're going to start with our qualifiers for the National History B and U.S. Geography Olympiad. So our first award is going to go to Cole Pleppel, who was a qualifier for the National History B finals, national finals, and the U.S. Geography Olympiad. So Cole, come on up. Also qualifying for the National History B finals and the U.S. Geography Olympiad was Donovan Connolly. And then a qualifier for the National History B finals was Ben Mooney. And then Ben Bursh also qualified, but I don't believe he's here tonight. We're going to move on to Book Bowl Championships. So in sixth grade, Patrick Hart was part of the Book Bowl Championship team. Patrick, if you're here. And joining him on that team would be Kathleen Henley. And then Isla Conkey, if she's here. Okay. Girls, you can come and get your certificates and shake hands. If I butcher your name and pronunciation, please forgive me in advance and come correct me at another time so that I can get it right because I am not a pro. Okay, next up, we had some of our fifth graders participate in what was called the Noetic Math Competition, which was a national competition. We actually finished in the top 20% of all schools across the country over, yep. And so these students were honorable mention recipients. Emerson Blair. Lucy Dretz. Reese Phalen. Emma Strong. Isabel Shi. Kira Miller. Maxwell Strong. And there were four others. So if Thomas, Robert, Declan, or Lilly are here, please come forward also.
Robert.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gatz, we're on to the next one. Next up is a very exciting category of awards. It is our Special Olympians. And we had four students this year compete in the Special Olympics and place. So with us tonight is Ava McCormick. Ava placed first in the 100-meter run and second in the 200-meter run and qualified for state. And then I don't think, is Luke Perry here or Cameron Dominic or is Peter Garcia here? Oh, there's Cameron. All right, Cameron, come on up. Cameron got sixth place in the 100-meter run, so that's very exciting. Okay. The next category are some Visual Arts Awards. And the following students earned contest winners for Visual Arts. Ella, I know I'm going to butcher this one, Schenader. Shuck Schenader, thank you. Hi, Ella, go over here. Catalina Barsati. Aleah Braybeck. And I'm not sure if Penelope Black or Michael Kallus are here, but they also were part of that group. And Ella and Aleah are moving on to state. Next up, we have our AAUW poster contest winners, Women's History. The first one is Diana Arroyo. We have Alexandra Salas. And then there were two additional winners, Patrick Galloway and Katie McAllister. Not sure if you're here. Now, one of our events that's near and dear to my heart since I helped facilitate this one, the Young Author Awards. And I see our sponsors here as well, so we're going to go through the list. Here we go. It's a big list. First place in kindergarten, Evelyn May. First place in fifth grade, James Long. Third place, third place in fifth grade is Natalie Colts. First place in fourth grade, Kyle Enix. Third place in kindergarten, Allison Severt. In second grade, second place, Gabrielle Dorle. Another second place in second grade, Diego Garza. A third, hi, Diego, go see Mr. Gatz. Third place in second grade is TJ Goodman. First place in third grade, Lyndon Leander. Third place in third grade, Naomi Nianwees. Nianvice, thank you, Naomi. I love when you're not shy. In fourth grade, third place, Jacob Reyes. And in second place and first grade, Josie Chase. If you are here for Young Authors and I didn't call your name, please come forward. That just means I didn't have your RSVP. Anyone else from Young Authors? Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the West Suburban Consortium for Academic Excellence Art Awards, another big group. So these students had their artwork selected to be displayed at Chaney Mansion in Oak Park, Illinois, along with all the other schools in our region, right? It was super exciting and super fun to see all their artwork. So if you didn't get a chance to go this year, I encourage you to go next year. It's a lot of fun. Okay, so here we go. In kindergarten, Charles Parslow. In first grade, Sonia Peterson. Go ahead, Sonia. In fifth grade, John Marquez. Okay, and these I don't have grade levels for, but we're going to go through the names. Emerson Blair from Central, or Hollywood, excuse me, Hollywood. Claire Cameron from Central. Claire Evans from Central. Sophia Miller from Hollywood. Naomi Nianvice. Nianvice? I'm getting it. Just give me three more times, I'll get it. Kylie Rising from Hollywood. And Elias Schreier from Central. And then, keep, we're going to keep going. There's more. We're getting to the, if you're, if you're an elementary student with an art show award and you didn't have your name called, it's because you didn't RSVP. So if you're here, come forward now because then I'm going to have the Hauser Art Awards next. Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, Hauser Art Awards. You ready? Montserrat Regatta, sixth grade. Anna Neva, seventh grade. Sophie Swisyonis, seventh grade. Natalie Vega, seventh grade. Caroline Bitorff, eighth grade. Donovan Connolly, eighth grade. Elena Eisenhardt, eighth grade. Chloe Marhul, eighth grade. Alicia Valencia, eighth grade. Are there any other Hauser Art students that are here tonight whose names I did not call? Come on up. And this is Sarah Walfeld. Okay. Yeah, Sarah? All right, Sarah, congratulations. Okay, the next award is a very unique one. It actually is from something that was completed last year, but the award was given this year. And it is something that some of our social studies students during sixth grade, who are now seventh graders, partnered with Riverside Brookfield High School on to do a little documentary. And it was submitted to a film festival, and it won first place in the TV show category by Midwest Media Educators Association. So the students that were a part of that are being recognized this evening. And that would be Luciano Curio. Thomas Dixon. Owen Figerhut. Apollo Gama. Christian Perez. And Natalie Vega. Okay. Now, we are moving on to some Music Department Awards. So first, with the 2018 Bruce Perryman Scholarship in Vocal Music is Veronica Hunt. Congratulations, Veronica. The 2018 Choral Directors Award goes to Brooke Craig. The Orchestra Directors Award goes to Noah Breonis. And then we had one other orchestra director, Anthony Perry, but I don't believe he's here tonight. So we're moving on to our very last set of awards here, which would be the Choral Director Awards. 2018 Choral Director Award, Violetta Marovic. Which is being most very rare, Spal. Band Director Award, Ronald Makia. And Nicholas Sucharsky. Probably in the back here. Yeah, well, shake your hands first.
Right here, right there.
Here they are. All right, Nicholas, we got it.
That's Ronnie.
Oh, okay. Ron.
Ronnie.
There we go. We're good. And those are all of our award winners tonight. And we always know all our students are award winners. We have a lot going on, but tonight it was nice to recognize all of those in the third trimester. So thank you for coming. If you have homework to do or you want to just enjoy the 80-degree weather, you're not mandated to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're welcome to.
Lot of interesting stuff.
Thank you. You did well. I'll send all those to school. You're the best. Thank you.
Without prep, I did the best I could.
You're great.
I don't know if you didn't hear his name. He was, um, the T, the T.
Congratulations. Great job again. Mrs. Miller, I think they're trying to get through behind you here.
I know some of those.
I just worked with some of them. But no, I did know I was watching.
But to you, that was actually, you know, in your eyes, like, oh my God. Like, I'm like, hi. One of my daughter, my friend's daughters. And I was like, what a good skill.
Hey, you skipped all of us, didn't you? I want to shake too. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm going to shake your hand right now.
You don't want to stay in the dust.
Absolutely not. Yes, totally understand.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, again. It was fun.
Should I continue on to superintendent's report?
Yes, why don't you continue on to superintendent's report here.
All right. That was great. Thank you all for, it's a good board representation tonight. Yeah. All right, so much less exciting items here. I have our, the updated Board of Education meeting scheduled for the next school year. It's continued to keep the first Wednesdays for Pretty the Whole and the third Wednesdays for regular board meetings. There's only one that jumped out to Margie and I, that's the, November 21 is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I'm thinking you probably wouldn't want to meet that night.
That sounds good, yeah. Yeah, we, no one's going to be here, right?
Should we try to not have one or do we should try to reschedule?
Not have it, right. So can we the whole?
No, regular board.
Oh, regular.
We might have to have one.
Might have to have or something.
Can we, can we switch? Can we skip it?
Switch, switch it. That sounds good, yeah.
Like, make, try to make the November a special meeting if there's action items that need to be addressed?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Or, I don't know whether it's better to do November or December, but one of the two. We figure that out, I guess.
The 19th is my brother.
Maybe just a... But we would take that first.
So, so the board is, the board is back in session, so if we could, thank you.
It's all right.
So I think, people are probably in agreement that the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is not a good night, I would assume. So why don't we just change it as Joel was suggesting to either the, can we the whole before or the can we the whole after? I don't know what, there's always some action items. I'm not sure which is better to do before or after.
I think it's easier to, yeah. Figure it out.
Figure it out as we get there.
Figure it out as we move forward. Right. Yeah, and if need be, we would consider either cow wet the November or the December special meeting if there are action items that would need to be addressed.
Sounds good, yeah.
All right. Then the next item I had was our annual safety meeting. I just wanted to share that we had, I'll say second annual, I don't know if it was something that was happening before, but it was really a nice meeting on April 11th to convene our local fire and police from Riverside, North Riverside, and Brookfield. We meet with our principals and our leadership team, as well as the leadership from fire and police in those three villages, talk about student safety, how we manage a crisis. It's just, it's a really nice kind of opportunity to have dialogue and put names and faces together also. So shared the information about that, wanted to share that with all of you. Another item that doesn't require any board action, but wanted to make mention, as we are planning, we are planning to do our annual report again to be sent out this summer, summer of 2018. I think that'll be the third annual report in three years. And actually, our own Jason Smith is going to do the annual report this year. So we've hired an outside consultant in years past. I think it'll be really nice to have Jason do it. He's, does some work with our communications and I think also has a really nice sort of eye for layout and that kind of thing, too. So excited about that. Wanted to also just acknowledge our letter that we got from Illinois State Board of Education about our LEA determination, which is really a way of looking at all of our special education programming. And they established a number of criteria that determine that we are indeed providing a free and appropriate public education for all of our children with special needs and doing it in the least restrictive environment or the most inclusive environment, environments possible based on student needs. So just congratulations to Pam Shaw and the special education team who continues to keep that process moving forward in a really meaningful, appropriate, and successful way for our students. So, thank you. And then one other item, and Lynda, feel free to jump in and help me with this, is that, you know, as agreed, we want to make sure that the board and the community are fully informed as our processes move forward about facilities. And there are really two, two things moving simultaneously. One is the AMES Visioning Committee. So that's a committee, as you all know, that's looking very specifically at AMES and what future learning would look like at AMES school. That group met and the agenda is shared there. They're actually meeting again next Wednesday and actually taking a field trip this Friday to go see more kind of updated, modernized school in Schiller Park. And then we also have our Facilities Advisory Committee continuing to meet. As we know, the AMES Visioning Committee is really charged with looking very specifically at AMES and the needs there and the goals and direction there. Facilities Advisory continues to look at kind of the broad picture of the entire long-range facilities plan. And that group met, was that just last, last week? So...
Thursday, yes, Thursday. Yeah, so the AMES Visioning Committee, it was another great session. The teachers remained incredibly engaged. We, I don't know if you remember, the first time we met, our architect Carrie was like, "We're not talking about space." So we were just talking, well, this time, we were talking about space. So it started with, there was some homework where we had to look for images that, for different types of spaces in the school. So those were all compiled, and we kind of spent a good, I would say, 45 minutes, 60 minutes, looking through all the images, talking about them, why people put them there. So it started with that, and then we moved on to talking about different spaces in the school. So we did a lot of brainstorming around spaces. We're doing a field trip on Friday morning, and then we're going to meet again Wednesday. So I feel like it's really starting to move into the more specific, which is great. I thought it was a really productive meeting. And then we, then the very next morning, we met for the Facilities Advisory Committee, and we kind of just talked about wanting to make sure that other things are still on our radar as we move forward with this AMES project. So it was a shorter meeting, but we talked about outdoor space, front offices, so making sure that we, that conversation is still moving forward while we're talking about AMES. So it was a productive facilities week. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out or ask now or...
Otherwise, that's everything I have on the superintendent's report.
So Lynda?
Yep.
Next item is the consent agenda with the Board Secretary. I'd like to read the consent agenda, please.
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda includes... for 2018 and 19, the 2018 to 2019 staff appointments, the payables pre-lists from April 30th and May 16th of this year, the PAV YMCA childcare program for the 2018 to 2019 school year, the, and the designation of the 2018 to 2019 holidays for the full-year employees.
Mr. Joel, are there any items that any board member would like pulled off of the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie, I just note that all of the administrative contracts are a public view, the aggregate raise for, across the, across the administrators that we just approved is 3.15%, that's the salary raise, there are no other changes to the contracts. Next item is personnel item, at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to accept the recommendation of the administration to terminate the employment of the educational support staff member as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next up, we have, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2018-2019 contract for the Director of Finance and Operations with a salary of $135,000 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, did you want to say a few words about this?
I do want to say a few words, and he actually happens to be here, so, Mr. Jim Fitten is here in the audience, and he wants to come and say hi, but I'll make sure that you have figured out who all our Board of Education members are, but Jim comes to us from Special Education Cooperative, and also some local school districts, and went through our rigorous interview process, and really found him to be an outstanding and strong candidate, and brings to us a lot of experience in the areas of school district finance, so, look forward to having him join our team here.
Thanks, Martha, any other comments or questions? If not, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next up, we have the Riverside Educational Council, are there any comments from Riverside Educational Council?
No. Thank you for a wonderful teacher appreciation.
Oh, thank you. Nice.
Jeff, you need to item I.
Skip something?
Yes.
Oh, geez, the most important...
Oh! The board's single employee. Just a little, just minor importance.
All right, so, at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution regarding the superintendent schools and the contract for 2018 to, July 2018 to June 2021, with a salary of $188,000 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second, oh, I don't have a second, sorry.
So, we are, it's hard to believe, but we are in the second year of our superintendent, Dr. Ryan Toy's contract, is a three-year contract, and so, we are very happy that she is going to stay for a, another three-year contract, that's what we're voting on tonight. So, the contract is essentially identical, not identical, but with the goals have been updated, to reflect the goals that have been sort of finished so far, and they've been updated to the new goals, but the contract is otherwise unchanged, other than the $188,000 salary for the first year, so. Is there any further comment on this contract update? If not, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie, and thanks, Joel, for catching that. So, then, we move on to board member comments. Any board member comments about anything they've, people have seen, or?
Two things, I attended the school law conference three weeks ago now, a lot of interesting commentary, especially with regards to the very, the fact that every IEP, every student hearing is very unique, and often comes with a lot of non-school contributing factors. I had some comments regarding the evidence-based funding, which, it's important for the state, but it also tends to shoehorn everybody into the same mold. And finally, attended the choir concert a week ago, which was also well-attended, and I'm really impressed with the new choir teacher, seems to really trying to motivate the kids and bring them together, and trying to, hard to recruit new members.
Yeah, I, two things, we had the staff recognition and retirement dinner, that was, that a few of us went to, and it was fantastic, it's one of my favorite nights to go to, and I mean, honored some really great people, and it was really great to see the turnout, and the presentations are always very moving, I cried a few times, you know, so that was wonderful. And I also got to attend, and I, Joel was there as well, I'm sure, and I think Dan, at the Howser Open House.
Yes.
Yes. No, you don't have a, no, and that was a, for me, a really fun night, because I have a sixth and eighth grader, and one who's excited to show us, and one who was like, why do I have to come? So, it was really fun, actually, so, I thought it was, every room we went into, there was something left out to see and talk about, and the teachers were really engaging, so I, I really thought we'd stop in for 10 minutes, and we were there for an hour, so it was great.
I agree with Linda, that, the, of the teachers' appreciation there was very nice, really well done, so, good event.
No, the teacher appreciation was nice, and I did enjoy it, it was my first one, so, and also, I did go to Hollywood has their second, I think it's their second, I hope it's their second, talent show, they have a talent show every year, and that's quite entertaining, had all, pretty much every kid from kindergarten all the way through with grade doing something, so.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Let's see, I believe I attended the choir concert as well, very good performance, very impressed with the choir, new choir instructor as well, as well as the Symphonic and Wind Ensemble Band Concert recently, I think it was what, last week or two weeks ago, but, so we're actually still missing a Lego piece from, from a, Cars piece, if anyone sees it in the auditorium, still looking for it, otherwise, yeah, definitely very, very good and very impressive performance by the kids.
Anything else? All right, then, if not, we move on to the committee reports, both Sherry and Rich are not here tonight. Rich had just a couple of things that he asked me to mention, one is that he has great confidence in, in Mr. Fitten's abilities, he was on the interview committee, just wanted to welcome him. The other, the other thing he wanted to say, and Linda already commented that on this, is what the AIMS Visioning Committee was, in his view, going, going very well so far, so, those are the two things he wanted me to mention. Dan, did you have any updates on the Policy Committee?
Well, I think it's the very next item in the old business, we definitely had a lot of discussion, taking into account the comments from the board, and last time around, for the Policy 730 for student assignment. Other than that, that's been our primary focus the last couple of weeks since the last meeting.
Great. All right, well, then, if there's no further committee reports, then we move on to the old business, first item, as Dan just mentioned, is the Policy 730, the student assignment and intra-district transfer, this is an action item, so at this moment, at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve Policy 730, a student assignment and intra-district transfer as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So, maybe we should, before voting on that, we should maybe, Dan, did you want to just review with, with the board and the public, the major items in this policy, that, you know, anything, anything that we sort of exchanged since last time, or?
Well, as I mentioned, we took into account some of the changes suggested from the board last time around, I think the important things to note are, we also, I think, included an FAQ, which we had not put out this, the last time, we didn't have that available yet, so we have that to answer a lot of the questions that those on the board, or those in the public might have as well. Definitely the important things to keep in mind there is that, you know, I think the biggest change in this policy is that we're no longer basing it on when a student registers, but essentially, much more, it's, it's, we're trying to take into account the capacity of the school, as well as walkable distance for, for the students. So, Jeff, I know you had some significant, significant input on the last thing, did you want to, want to review that?
Yeah, no, I think that, that pretty much covers it, I think, as you said, we, we took into account some of the comments that people had in, in terms of the policy, so I think right now, it's, it's very clean and straightforward, and then, as Dan mentioned, Martha wrote an FAQ, which kind of highlights some of the, some of the details of how this, this whole thing works, Martha, did you have any, anything you wanted to add to this, or?
No, I think it's been discussed from the last meeting and this meeting, I guess the thing I would say is, one of the things I've been really thinking about, and have been able to reach out and talk to some parents, and even some local realtors, is how much of a change this really represents, so I think, you know, our goal is really to bring clarity to a previous policy around flexible boundaries, and so I think this policy, Jeff, as you said, is cleaner, hopefully clear, and then with the attachment of the FAQs also, we will put that up on our website, we're gonna actually send out, sort of through direct email to all of our families, this, assuming we, you know, move forward that, share that, share that with all of our families, and I think that will be valuable also, and I also intend to write a letter to local realtors, so, just to, again, make sure that communication is as clear as possible on this topic.
Right. So, we still have the open question, I guess, of, we sort of referred to this, discussed this last time, but we have not changed that, this element, which is the class size policy, this is something, I guess, we discussed last time, is wanting to revisit, this is not sort of part of this particular change that we've made, but is that something that we still want to talk about in a future policy meeting, you know, coming back to that topic?
I definitely think it makes sense to, to come back to it at, at another time, as you mentioned, you know, our primary focus has been on this policy, so.
Right.
But it does dovetail, and it makes sense in, in a lot of ways, how we're taking this policy, and we're recognizing the realities on the ground, in terms of, you know, class size and distribution, or I'm sorry, in terms of, of school capacity, taking into the accounts class size, as well, is just something, the natural next step, as was mentioned by the board last time.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, too.
Okay. Is there any further comment or questions about the policy that we are voting on tonight? Policy 730?
No, I don't have any questions, I do think, I think it's really clean, and very easy to understand, and I appreciate that, and I just want to, like, reiterate that it's really not changing anything we do, it's just actually bringing the policy up to what's going on, so, this, while the policy looks very different, it's really reflective of the practice that's happening.
Is it a cleaner way to implement what the flexible boundaries intended to do?
That we are committed to neighborhood schools, and, you know, it still holds everything that the other policy had, so.
Right. We just note, sort of, this is not related to the policy directly, but it looks like kindergarten enrollments for next year are already, I can't remember the exact numbers, 147, that's a very, very large number.
It's on last Friday, so.
Given at this point right now, it's already larger than the class, entering class last year, we haven't even got the enrollments from people moving in over the summer, so, it's a little bit, little bit of a concern, right there already, but we'll have to deal that, with that as it comes, I guess, so. So, if there's no further discussion on this, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie, and then, we have, sort of, going along with the policy, which is very simple and clean, we have the Exhibit 730 E2, which discusses a little more detail of how it's actually implemented, and what the goals are, which, as Linda mentioned last night, the goals are to maintain the neighborhood school, to effectively use classroom space at the four elementary schools, and provide the administration with effective tool for maintaining appropriately balanced class size throughout the district, that's kind of what the, what we're kind of trying to achieve here with this, with this procedure, and then it outlines a little bit about how things work exactly, so. At this point, is there a motion to approve the Exhibit 730 E2 Elementary School Assignment Policy, just the exhibit to the policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this exhibit? If not, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie.
Next up is the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative Contract for July 2018, July 2019, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Chicago, Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative Contract for July 2018 to July 2019 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, would you maybe like to say a few words about this, so that people know exactly what, what's entailed here?
Sure. So, the Metropolitan Chicago Mathematics Initiative is actually a consortium of school districts in the area, that have come together to really look at improving high-quality math instruction, particularly with the shifts and changes that came with the Common Core State Standard, so, in this particular agreement, what we've really purchased is really kind of what I would describe as kind of an à la carte coach, somebody that can come to us and work directly with our teachers on improving mathematics instruction, in a way that, actually, Merrill works with the principals and with the teachers directly, to kind of determine grade levels and teachers that have been particularly interested in this, I know Merrill has some very preliminary data that we'll probably look at at our board goal-setting date in the June Cow meeting, but really, we feel that it's been a really effective way for teachers to get some additional support, professional development, we've kind of talked about that job-embedded professional development, that professional development really kind of delivered in real time to real teachers, when they want to talk to us about real students, and this is one of those models for that, that's, we find really exciting, but it's, it's a unique model, and I think it deserves the board's unique attention with this particular consideration. Merrill, do you want to share more on that?
The only thing I want to add is, it's not just benefiting the individual teachers that are working, because they turn around and take their practices back to their team meetings as well, so the whole team has benefited from some of the feedback and the strategies that they've been working on, and like, as Martha said, there's some preliminary data that's looking exciting, and I don't want to go too far into it tonight, but you'll hear about it, the people that were directly impacted, we saw some nice results on some of our current assessments that we're administering right now, so.
So, Martha, does anyone have any questions about this, or comments? If not, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie.
Next up is a motion, a notice of a hearing of a resolution to waive limitation of administrative cost, so at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Notice of Hearing of Resolution to Waive Limitation of Administration, Administrative Cost as Presented?
So moved.
Second.
Martha, would you maybe like to explain a little bit about what this is, what this is all about, exactly?
Right, so the State Board of Education really sets guidelines about the allowable increase in administrative costs, so if you recall, we did that last year when the district hired a full-time superintendent, as you know, this year, we hired a full-time Director of Finance, so that, that number has incrementally gone up and changed over time, which requires us to have, do this hearing process.
Any questions about this topic, comments? If not, then, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.[1714.16]
So the State Board of Education really sets guidelines about the, the allowable increase in administrative costs. So if you recall, we did that last year when the district hired a full-time superintendent. As you know, this year we hired a full-time Director of Finance, so that, that number has incrementally gone up and changed over time, which requires us to have, do this hearing process.
Any questions about this topic, comments? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsati?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie.
So that's the end of the old business. We move on to new business. We have, the first item is capital and technology expenditures proposed for 2018, 2019. Now, we have two, two sets of expenditures here. One are capital expenditures, which I, and then the other is technology expenditures. I don't know if Mr. Holmes would like to maybe review these two kinds of expenditures for us here, the listener here, summarize them.
Um, yes, as I outlined, there are capital expenditures for the schools and special education totaled $82,722.64. And just to note that, in the past, a lot of those would have been considered capital expenditures, but with the accounting codes, anything that is less than $500 is considered a supply account. Anything between 500 and 999 is a non-capital expenditure, and then anything a thousand dollars and above is, is a capital expenditure. And then for the, of course, technology, the, their capital expenditures and supplies was $377,000. And then the software and licenses was $260,744, for a total of $637,744. And as I pointed out, a lot of those things that are considered technology are actually for other departments, that the other departments are, they are charged to the other departments, but Don Tufano is managing those accounts. So it's not like his, his expenditures are going up, it's just that he's managing them for other departments. Are there any questions?
Any questions about these, either of these two items?
I did have a question about the, in particular, the, the classroom interactive projector replacement. I know we talked about some different options. I wasn't sure what we finally went with. I don't know, Don, if you had any information on that.
In, in the presentation last month, the recommendation was to move forward with replacement at K5, so at the elementary buildings with the interactive projectors.
I just didn't know, have we ever gone over what, what was the model we chose or what the capabilities were on that? And then we, I remember at the Tech Steering Committee, we've talked about a couple of different things, but I didn't know if we finalized on something.
Yeah, with, given the way the, with the current technology in there, there is some proprietary equipment relative to Epson, so we did stick with, with Epson. Epson does have a, a couple of models of, of interactives. It's not the premium model of interactive, but it would be the equivalent replacement to what's in there, except it's a newer technology. So the, the technology that is, that is in classrooms now is in the five-to-six-year-old range, and five to six years ago is when the interactive projectors were really first coming on, coming to market. So it was a very new technology. And so this, the, the interactive projectors that we're recommending for, with replacement are just more current technology.
So they're still projectors, though, but they're not like flat screens or touchscreens like that?
Correct. It is still a, a short throw projector, very similar to the one that's mounted in the back of the, the library here.
What's the price difference between the interactive projector and just the standard projector?
The, the different, price difference between, is about 32 percent. Okay? So if you look at that overall dollar amount, the impact on that dollar amount is about 17 and a half percent overall, or I believe about $26,000 difference between the standard and the interactive.
And I think you said, you said some surveys where you show, you sort of said that for the elementary school teachers, they said that this interactive technology was absolutely essential, they couldn't live without it. Was that your kind of?
That, yes, and, well, we, we framed it in terms of if, if it was functioning properly, I think some of the issues that they've had with the projectors that are, are in currently is that it was a new technology. So I think anytime you become an early adopter of a technology, so what we did in advance of that, in advance of making a selection, we did deploy some new ones and had teachers working with it. And it's been, you know, a world of difference to them in terms of the feedback that we got. But the, the feedback from the survey was that if it did function as it was, as it's supposed to, that yes, they, they, they really saw it as a tool that they would, they would use, and, and moreover, that students would use. Because I think that's the key, is to really not necessarily have the student, the teachers using it all the time, is that the students are at the front of the class also using the interactivity.
Because interestingly, I, I ran a very small survey of my own after we talked the last time, a sample of two, actually.
Say it last name.
And that, one, one report was that, the one who's ninth grade now said, "Well, we tried to use the interactive elements a few times, but it never really worked properly." And then the fifth grader said, she had no idea what I was talking about. So like, it was sort of slightly a variance with the idea that this was sort of like essential element, I mean, essential element of what they're doing currently, but you're suggesting that maybe they're going to use it more if they get something that actually works, is that the idea?
Exactly. And I think a lot of the resources that have been, a lot of the curriculum resources, especially at the primary grades, are, have really been designed for that, that interactivity.
Okay.
So it was, it also allows them to leverage their, their resources more.
Yes, sorry, Jeff, I didn't mean to.
No, go on.
As we go to junior high, is it the same, is the same level of interactivity assumed with the resources, or?
No, and that's one of the reasons why we really put off the, the, the junior high purchase, was really to, to dig a little bit deeper. The, the feedback from staff was, was very much mixed. Instead of it being very much swayed at the K5 where, where there was a high level of desire to have that, the interactive technology, it was very split at the junior high. So is it, is it necessarily a blanket, you know, across the board? We did notice, like, in encore classes, it ranked highly as, as far as a need, but in some of the more of the gen ed type classes, it was not. So what we're going to do is, over the next year, is just dig deeper and really identify, well, we want to put the, the right resources in the right applications for some of the right classrooms.
And that would have been my suggestion as well.
Exactly. So we're going to, we're going to do a little bit deeper dive and gather more information for, I, I think one of the, the features that the junior high really wanted was the untethered, the ability to be untethered to the projector. Currently, you do have to be connected via an HDMI or VGA cable. With the technology that we're putting in at the, at K5, that will be, you will have untethered, they will have untethered access to it as well.
Can they still do untethered without interactive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So on the, on the budget, you, you listed as an exceptional expenditure, but in fact...
Well, it's something that we don't, that, it's not something that's reoccurring every single year.
It's not every single year, but every, every five years you're going to pay another $1,000 or something like that.
Exactly. So if we go in this cycle, the thing would be in probably, I think we could get five to six years out of, out of these, these devices, and then we'd be in that cycle of doing K5 and then doing the, the junior high the subsequent year. One thing that we will do with the devices that we're pulling out, because we are doing projectors and document cameras, is that we also have our own reserve of spares for the junior high for next year in case of failure. So we won't have to buy any replacement equipment over the course of that year. And then we'll obviously have some spears in the, the future.
And you said that last time, which I applaud. One minor nitpick on the budget, can you, in terms of the quantities on these items, the Chromebooks, it's listed as one, and I'm sure it's multiple machines?
Right. It's about 200, we have the average about 200 units per, per grade level. It depends on the, the class size. That's what we really go by, projected class size, add some buffer, especially at the sixth grade, where we tend to pick up enrollments, you know, add, in sixth grade, I think, how is it, the enrollment numbers tend to spike, you know, from fifth grade to sixth grade, if we pick up more students in here, so we base it on that.
Can you add the number of items that we're actually purchasing?
Sure. Yeah, we could report back with it once we actually make a purchase.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Or even just the assumption of how many units?
Right. That, that, basically enough of 200 units per, per grade level. That's kind of our, our, our average, and so just use it as a budgetary number, and then we come back with it.
And what's the assumption with regards to the projectors?
Because we have replaced some of the equipment, it's about, it's on average, it's about 67 units of projector, document camera, control box, all the components, but it's not exactly that, because we have replaced them. So there is some new equipment out there.
Plus or minus is fine.
But that number there, actually, that number is, we did get, I think, the, the budgetary amount for the project was 167.5, and that number reflects the bids that we got back. So that is, there is a breakdown more of how many projectors, how many document cameras, how many control boxes are included, and installation.
I'm not questioning the totals, just how many units are we talking about when that would be appreciated?
Sure.
So Ms. Clyber couldn't be here tonight, but she just had a couple of questions that she wanted me to ask. One of them is, there's, in the software, there's an inline mathematics service for 27,000. What is that exactly?
That is actually, that is currently Ten Mark's.
Oh, Ten Mark's.
That's a Ten Mark's program.
Okay.
And as we discussed at the last meeting, the Ten Mark's is going away. So, you know, we will be looking at, I guess, we will be looking at some alternatives to that.
That's your place.
But that is for the renewal for Ten Mark's.
Replacement for Ten Mark's, got it.
Yeah, well, that is for, there'll be one more year.
Got it.
Yes. But if we do find something, there has been some flexibility, or they're supposed to give us some flexibility or an out in our current contract.
Okay.
If we do identify something that we want to transition to mid-year, we can do so.
Okay. And then in terms of the software, again, there's a bunch of different software programs. She wanted to know which of these different programs are new this year and which of them are recurring? Do you have the?
The, they were marked as, anything that was new was marked, new or expanded?
Yep.
Was marked. I do believe, I don't have it in front of me yet. Is this, is the software in?
Yeah, it's all software.
NGSS Software, STEAM Expansion, 3.5.
Yeah, so that was the, the expanded, I think, for, yeah, the defined, defined STEM.
Maybe, rather than you going through it right now, maybe could you just, like, let, let Martha know, and then she can?
Yeah, there, there were not, I think there was, you know, from an expand, oh, I know one of the ones that would be new would be the online fee payment.
Okay.
That was another one, that was a new service, but it was very, very limited in terms of the...
So these are mostly renewals?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions then, for either Mr. Tufano or Mr. Holmes?
I just, I'll go back to one comment where you said you kind of did some piloting programs of different options that were available for the, and this was about the projectors again. So, and, and I also heard it said that we chose the absence to keep some of the same connections and save costs there, I guess.
Right. Yeah, there's, for instance, the, the mounting bracket is a, it's not a universal mount, okay? So it'd be another thing to uninstall, another thing to purchase, another thing to reinstall. And then also finding, even finding a solution that has a, a level of a control box that teachers have become very accustomed to, everything that they connect into, it provides, essentially, it's how you toggle between different inputs, it interfaces with the audio system. So it's, yeah, it was kind of a, it did, it did limit our, sort of, without really expanding the number of dollars, the dollars on it.
And then other options that were piloted, maybe were going to be significantly more costly, or?
The other ones that we did look at that would have some type of a control interface, a lot of those were typically more, more, more of a digital interface and customizable, which were very nice, but again, very cost prohibitive. And then you also add on a layer of, it's another thing to train on, it's another, you know, it's another level of cost even just to, to get teachers up to speed how, with how to use that new interface. So there, from a, you know, from a transition standpoint, the, it also made a lot of sense sticking with this.
So the goal would be that we bring the same information back, we can make some of those additional sort of edits around quantity, and then also just making sure we're clear in which tools are new and which ones are continuation and the curriculum and as well as the operations area, with the idea being that we would hope to be able to move forward, because these are items that will be within next year's budget, but require purchasing over the summer, really, before formal budget adoption.
Any other questions, sir?
Thank, thank you.
Next, we have a asbestos abatement proposal for 92 Repton. I don't know, Mr. Holmes, who wanted to tell us about that?
For the demolition of the Repton House, the architects aren't experts in, in asbestos abatement, so that this company would do the design work and the bid documents for that portion of, of the bid. So they, they'll do the inspection to make sure that, because they did find asbestos in, I believe, the garage and some pipes, so they're going to, so that's for that, for the inspection and the routing and the pipe, and then the project design and document preparation, abatement contractors for the pre-bid and the walkthrough, and then the bid tabulation for when the bids come in.
So they found some asbestos in, like, pipe insulation in the garage, is that?
Yeah, in the, I believe, the garage has it and then also in the house.
Okay.
Remind us, was this included in the previous estimates? I, I think it was in the demolition estimate, but it wasn't included in the professional services?
Yeah, it's not, DLT or DLA will not make, will not be paid for this portion.
No, I understood that.
Yes.
That was never, there was no line item for professional services for asbestos removal in the previous estimates we saw for the demolition. Is that, and you might not remember.
Um, I don't believe it was, but...
I didn't think so either, but I don't remember either.
But at least the design work it wasn't, but it...
So this, this is just for sort of identifying where the asbestos has to come out and...
Right, and...
Doing the work, right? It's like 3,000 hours.
Correct.
Got to get these pipes out or whatever.
Right. Professional services for that.
It doesn't really require board access, more board information and knowledge, because it shifts our timeline.
Let's say, I don't know anything about asbestos removal, but it's $3,000 to say you need to take this asbestos out, it sounds like a lot. It's like, I know you'd do the work, but like, a professional consultant would say, "Yeah, I get some asbestos here," you know, how much design do you, you know? I think a professional consult, asbestos firm would know exactly what to do without having a $3,000 design, but...
I guess I just had a question too, because this was a few years back, but I had asbestos removed from a condo building that I was the treasurer for, and we contracted it out, but they took the asbestos out, we didn't hire somebody to walk through, say, "You got to take this out."
Right. I think it would be fairly straightforward.
Right, they took it out. I mean, it was more than $31,000, I want you to know that.
The work.
Right, exactly.
This isn't even the work.
Right.
Well, the district has to publicly bid the work, and in order to get proper bids, you have to have the, the design and what is entailed properly, so that they're, so that they can, every bidder can make the same bid.
Right.
So that, and then less unforeseen conditions and things like that. So that's kind of why this is needed.
Right.
Whereas DLA is not an expert at this, so they are saying that this company should do it for them, for, for the district.
Any other questions about this? Thanks, Mr. Holmes. Next, we'll move on to item three, which is the evidence-based funding model. Martha, did you want to?
Yes, I'll take that one. So we, I know the board has been informed of this really over the course of this particular year, but really wanted to take a few minutes to inform the board and ask, provide an opportunity to ask questions, but also really inform the community about evidence-based funding. So I'm going to move through this relatively quickly, I think. Let's see. So evidence-based funding is sort of the new law of the land around funding for school districts. My understanding is really this has, funding for Illinois school districts really has not changed since 1997. So evidence-based funding really speaks to this idea of adequacy of funding, so there's a new state formula to really establish adequacy funding for school districts. I think it's really important, particularly in District 96 and a lot of other districts, is when we talk about our adequacy target, that there's not a mandate or an edict in this, this is really a concept, it's really a theoretical model for funding school districts. So really comes to this interesting question of what is adequacy? And a group of researchers in the State Board and the state of Illinois tried to look at some particular research around that, and we'll, we'll talk about that here as we move forward. But the important thing, I think, is we think about evidence-based funding in District 96, and something I know, I think a lot about, and our district leadership team has thought a lot about and talked a lot about is considerations about where we align and where we don't. And really this opportunity to tell our District 96 story, and to make sure that that's a story that's consistent for all of you as board members and is something that is really understood by our community. So I will try not to get too technical, actually, attached for the board and in the board book for public view if people are interested, much more detailed and elaborate presentations done by the State Board of Education on this topic, and you can really dig in and study it as much as you want, but what I really want to get to is kind of that big idea around District 96 and what we have right now. So the stages in determining adequacy, we're really looking at the cost of educating all students according to these defined, you know, cost factors, and looking at each district's local resources, our local resources are specifically our property tax dollars, and then looking at a process of distributing additional state funds to assist districts in meeting adequacy. So again, thinking about the, really, the purpose behind a lot of the state funding was to bring districts up to an adequacy level, so that all districts had kind of that, some base, what they really are looking at, that base funding minimum, and then applying new money to districts that would need more than the base. So as we move forward, understanding that there are 26 elements, I think it was 27 and went back to 26, I think it's 26, elements that went into a determination of what goes into evidence-based funding. So it was things like class size, things like class size different for children and communities of high poverty, the kinds of supports and services that we use to intervene and support students, so how many specialists, something like a math interventionist or reading specialist, but also how many special area teachers like music and art that we have and very much value in our community. Also looking at things like principals, they talk about principals and assistant principals in a prototypical school size. One of the things we also know is we are not prototypical in terms of our school sizes. But other ideas like instructional facilitators, so you heard us talk just briefly about our à la carte purchasing of a coach from the MCMI group. So instructional facilitators are kind of that, viewed as that coach, that person, that guide on the side, that person that comes in kind of a master level teacher that does that job embedded professional development. And then school site support, school site supports really speak about the things that you just need operationally to run a school, like a school secretary is one of the areas that comes up. So all those things went into this formula and looking at those 26 different elements, and then it was calculated with our student enrollment, and then they looked at our actual revenue, so what did we really acquire in terms of property tax? And then they established this distribution or tier distribution for new money. You can look at sort of, again, a different way of kind of looking at a sum of all those educational costs, and what I really, again, I think I described a lot of these, but again, those areas of what they look at as effective or evidence-based resources. So we talk about it as kind of a theoretical model or a model of how to distribute resources. And so again, some of them are named and listed there, and you all have even a more detailed analysis available to you in board book and sort of our own measurements within District 96, and sort of where we have some of this, enough of this, not enough of that, again, according to that model, with again, the more important question being of what's most important here in District 96. So this to me is the key question of what does this really all mean for District 96? Really important and valued conversations, again, within the district around where we align and where we don't. But really, we've also talked a lot about taking kind of this holistic overview of all of our resources. So, so an example where we're higher is paraprofessionals, but an area where we're lower is what they call supervisory aides, so aides that would help perhaps with entry into school in the morning and lunch supervision. We're very low on that, but we're high on the paraprofessional end. When you look at it in combination, we start to sort of match up a little better. English language learners was an area that we knew we were probably somewhat deficient in several years ago, that's a program that there's been a lot of increase in supports and services, and also a lot of really important gains. One of the things you may not have been super noticeable in the personnel report tonight is we're actually going down a .5 FTE in the supports for English language learners because so many children with the right supports that were put in place moved out of the program. So again, that to me really speaks to that, what is our District 96 story, because we needed that service, we still need that service, but maybe now not to as much of a degree or need as much as we sort of put the right services in place. When we look at the work around gifted and advanced learners, and you all heard a report on that just two months ago, they talk about a certain dollar amount for gifted learners, but we really define that more broadly around sort of advanced learners, very intentionally and by design, when we thought about the kinds of supports that we wanted to deliver to students in District 96. So again, when we try to look at it holistically, I think there's a better match. When we kind of dig in and look at the where we have too much or where we have too little, I'm not always sure that that explains exactly what it is we're trying to do to make sure that all of our children are successful here in our school district. So again, it's that careful consideration I put here is of our effectiveness, what works and what do our students need? And that has been, I know something that was well in the works before I got here as the superintendent, but as the superintendent, that is very much an ongoing conversation that we have weekly, if not daily, with our district leadership team and our principals around what works and what do students need? And again, I sort of put at the bottom there scrutiny of our new and existing resources. So how do we know that the services that this board has really very generously applied to our school district are really working and are really making a difference in the lives of our children? And I look at tonight when what, 60 some odd children came and really, they were being awarded and acknowledged for many of those special things that we do in this district that other districts might not be able to offer some of those programs and services for children. So again, it's part of what we value and part of what we also then pay for, and what it also then makes us look, our adequacy target is higher as you'll see here as we move forward. So this idea of needing to be flexible in the application of our resources, we have, as you know, two very small elementary schools, we just talked about our student assignment policy just a few minutes ago, about really valuing the neighborhood school concept. By doing that, we really acknowledge that we don't have prototypical school sizes, but that in doing that, we also have supported those schools with a principal and a school secretary and a nurse, and you know, things that we really feel are important to make sure that there's a high-quality education happening in all five of our schools. And I think that's very much something that this district has delivered well on. So again, this is, it gets a little bit interesting, perhaps complicated. We are determined to be at this tier four of adequacy, which means that we are above the adequacy target of 110%, meaning that we have essentially what some people have described as an over-distribution of resources. Again, it goes back to that question of, is the evidence-based funding a minimal model? And as a district like ours, we want to be above the minimum. On the other hand, we want to continue to be incredibly thoughtful to our taxpayers, and so making sure that, again, this is a high-quality education that is well-resourced but is a good value for the community. And I think we know that families move to this community for the school districts and the services that children receive in the schools. So, so we are at 127% of adequacy, 110% is the target. I think early in the year, they were initially estimating us to be somewhere around 131, when they did have more careful calculation of our student enrollment tax dollars, we actually dropped down just a little bit to 127% of adequacy, which actually means that our new money coming from the state, new money, is $2,376. So you see that that's a really minimal amount, and so that general state aid or that general state contribution of money is listed there for fiscal year 18.
Is that the total amount?
That's the, that's the total amount.
Extra.
That's, the additional new money is the 2,376. I'm looking for Rob, where did Rob go? Did he?
It's this fiscal year.
Yeah, that's fiscal year 18, which is this year. So that's our hold harmless amount.
The hold harmless, Martha, if you could, sorry, Martha and Rob, the hold harmless is.
You want to go up, Rob?
The hold harmless, under my understanding, is that whatever state funding we are currently getting, we will continue to get, and so that $2,000 is the additional funding that the state is providing statewide, and that's our portion of it, yes?
Yes, those are tier four, based on all factors, that yes, the hold harmless would have been 1,000, that would have been the 1.4 million we get, the additional 2,376.
So a couple of things happened. One is, the promise was that there was this hold harmless amount, that school districts would not receive less money, but they also recalculated what goes into this general state aid number. So, and pretty like some of the EL grants, some of the grants for English language learners were converted into the state monies. Pam, some special education reimbursement around personnel were then converted into the state money. So it is a hold harmless amount, I think we're still wondering, is it, you know, is it less money, you know, because is it covering?
I thought we were getting more than 1.4, 1.5 million, I think we're getting something like 2 million from the state.
That's on the recent?
There's other state monies.
There's other state, this is not everything.
Yeah, there's like other categoricals that are still in play. But that, this is just the general state aid plus some of the, there's some small EL amounts.
Transportation.
Some.
Transportation is separate.
Was it?
Transportation was separate.
Some special ed.
Right, some of this, there was some conversion of some previous reimbursements that will now be rolled into.
That's rolled into there, so that it's all based on that.
So I think people are still feeling cautious and in kind of a wait-and-see mode, you know, we are not a district that has to sort of wait for the state to provide the funding for us to be able to really keep our doors open. I think we're appreciative of that, very appreciative of that, but we want to certainly monitor that we are truly at that hold harmless amount that we are getting the state monies. So, you know, really, in summary, it's, you know, our goal as we know is to provide a high-quality education that addresses the needs of all students, that is the work of public education every single day, that is indeed a challenge, it's a challenge for all of you as board members, for district leadership, for our teachers, but I think our families certainly acknowledge that those investments matter, those investments are really important, that I think our goal is obviously, and our commitment is to continue to really monitor and to continue to bring back, you know, the both what's working, you know, is it working, and really scrutinizing and when and where we can make shifts and changes and continue to be very effective, that's our ongoing, you know, that's our ongoing goal. So I think this evidence-based funding brings it all into focus a bit, it really, I think, has been cause for some really valuable conversations amongst, I know even with all of you as board members, our district leadership team, and continuing to look carefully at all of this. So that is, that is evidence-based funding in a nutshell, and I wanted to make sure that you had all that. Our state report card and how information will be shared about each local school, sort of the student achievement, the cost attributed to each local school, that's all in a sort of shift and changing, there's a changing landscape there right now too, so we also think some of this will be more illuminated for the entire community through the state report card process. Any questions? All right.
Any questions?
I did have one question, I think where you talked about the 26 points, and it sounds like we have an idea coming back from the state, how we compare where we're
Yes.
beneficial, where we're not, or are in line with their recommendations, I guess.
Right, right.
I'm not sure how important that is, given our level of funding, I just wondered, you know, what those might be or were there areas, and would that be something that we might want to target for improvement in the years ahead, or is that really much of a consideration for us?
No, I think it's very much a real consideration, actually you have it in the board pack, so it's public information for all. Really, it's what we call a gap analysis here, it's called the worksheet. Marilyn and I actually attended a workshop back in January, we kind of really moved through very specific formulas, we took our personnel list, we matched it to these supports and services, and as you see on that worksheet that's attached, things that are in red are where we don't have enough of per the evidence-based funding, and things in the white are where we have too much of. And what you find, it's interesting, is we fall into both categories. So it's not like from an evidence-based funding and being at a high adequacy, we have sort of too much of or over-distribution of resources in core areas. So it's, it's an interesting model, and I think that's, that is the question, is it a model we want to align to? You know, because one of the conversations with school district leaders is it, you know, they talked about sort of a timeline of probably about 10 years, if you really as a goal want to align to this model, which for us would mean some increases in some areas and some decreases in others. And I think to continue to look at this as a, as a resource, as a framework, I think there really is value in it. I don't mean to say to ignore it, it's just, I think we continue to look to determine where we fit, where we don't. Where we don't, why not? And is that why not a good reason that's really benefiting children?
But even if we were to more closely align, it's not like it's going to improve our allocation all that much.
If we, if we perfectly aligned, we would drop inadequacy, and we would then, in theory, perhaps not levy as much in tax, you know, like would there be some sort of a lessening of the tax burden if we truly aligned? I think that's, that's a complicated question, but I think that theoretically there's, that's part of the answer.
No, I mean, I like what you said, Martha, but I guess my concern, I think we should try to align to this, but I think we need to look at, as you mentioned, what our schools are and why are we not meeting it, why might be more stat? Because, I mean, I think this is, I mean, each school is unique throughout the state, and I mean, we're unique, we're different than other schools, and so I think we should, our goal should be to align, but I think we should keep the alignment in sort of in light of what's going on in our, in our district.
One that's interesting that jumps out here, right, is that they talk about one principal for every prototypical school of 450 students at the elementary level. So we don't have a school of 450 students, we have one that's close to 400, and then we have two that, as you know, are just over 100. So, but interestingly, we come up as over 1 and 1/2 principal, but it doesn't mean that we want to get rid of 1 and 1/2 principals. But then it talks about schools should have assistant principals, and it talks about it that we're under by 2 and 1/2 assistant principals. So it's a very, you know, so is that, you know, almost, almost a wash, you know? So it's, it's a model, it's a theoretical model, it's a resource, it's a model for distribution of resources, and it's not something we're ignoring, but I, you know, I appreciate the comments, I think that's consistent with, you know, the district administrators too is thinking like, if we just did this, we would either be undoing some programming and leaving some other things that are necessary and needed, you know, unmet needs, and that's not what we want to fall into certainly. Anything else? We have one other thing. Jeff, one other item?
So, any other comments on this topic? And if not, then the next item is the proposed facilities improvements for this summer I don't know if Mr. Holmes would like to review these for us quickly?
In addition to the Repton, demolition of Repton and the Blythe Park roof replacement, these, I gave $160,500 worth of projects that the director of buildings and grounds thinks that, and I think can be done in-house.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about these projects, these small projects for the different schools?
When you say in-house, you mean just done through our usual methods?
Yeah, go out, get some quotes, they're within the threshold, hire someone to do it, or have, you know, some of the guys do it.
Sure, okay, understood.
Any other questions on these topics?
No, these are all basic maintenance items, that should.
Sounds good, thanks, Mr. Holmes.
All right, thank you.
So then, I think that wraps things up. Future meeting date, June 6th, maybe the whole, 7:00 PM at Hauser. June 20th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM at Hauser. July 4th, maybe the whole meeting is canceled, and.
Why?
So I think if there's, there's a bunch of closed session items at the back, bottom of the agenda, I think that's a mistake, so if there's no other business, then it's adjourned.